Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the meeting of the regular school board on Tuesday, August 19th, a beautiful day in Duluth. We want to welcome you all here. A special welcome to Cassandra Donkey. She's the National Director of the Institute for Civility. She comes down from Texas and she's up visiting us with Anita. And welcome, Cassandra, and we appreciate you coming to our meeting. Thank you very much. We'll begin with the roll call. If the clerk would read the roll. Okay.
Thanks, Chair Murneke. Member Harla?
Here.
Member Johnston?
Here.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Here.
Chair Murneke?
Here.
I am here.
I'm here.
Member Westholm?
Here.
Superintendent Gronseth?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Crawford?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Hanson?
Here.
Secretary Melinda Thiebeau?
Here.
And we have student representatives, Representative Manning?
Here.
And Representative Tremble. We have a quorum. Chair Murneke?
Thank you. If you'd all stand, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved by Member Westholm. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Laffler Kemp. All in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, discussion. No motion?
Okay. Bill, turn your mic off. Member Welty?
Yes, I would like to amend the agenda by adding the following resolution. Whereas the initial estimates of soft costs for the long-range facilities plan were placed at about 16 percent of the overall cost, and whereas the recent abbreviated report by the Minnesota's auditor confirmed that 27 percent of the spending on the long-range facilities plan went to pay for soft costs, and whereas there has not been any detailed documentation yet presented to the school board for this public spending, and whereas the Duluth School Board has a fiduciary responsibility to its taxpayers to ascertain that these $84 million of dollars were spent for the benefit of the Duluth schools, and whereas the Duluth school community has been suffering decreases in programming such as music, increased class sizes, diminished transportation, and increased student activity fees as a result of borrowing from the general fund to pay for LRFP bonds, and whereas there had been calls for greater transparency by the community, including recently, the editors of the Duluth News Tribune to ensure good governance. Therefore, be it resolved that the Duluth School Board demand that all entities who helped complete the long-range facilities plan and who made soft money expenditures towards its completion be directed to give the Duluth School Board full spreadsheet documentation of these payments as soon as practicable.
To amend the agenda, we'll need an unanimous -- I'm speaking. To amend the -- I'm explaining something right now. To amend the agenda, we'll need an unanimous vote by the board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Could we have some discussion on the motion and amendment?
Well, I'm not sure you do. I'm not sure you do. I think that we -- if we're going to have a unanimous vote to -- all we're talking about now is amending the agenda. We're not talking about the motion. We are not -- we're going to decide whether to change the agenda. That's the question at hand. Not talking about the motion. So, yes, Mr. -- Member Johnston?
When there's a motion that's second made, there is discussion. There always has to be discussion to do so as totally negating why we even have motions, why we even have a meeting, in fact. The point of if you say that apparently you appear to have a prejudice that this is going to lose, so we don't want to have discussion. The reason we have discussion is so people can make an intelligent decision. We have -- we are a deliberative body. I think that we have some members here, I think very well, that we could maybe even have a unanimous support on this. Certainly after they heard what we had to say, I think that we would. So, again, your ruling that we can't have discussion is contrary to our rules of order.
I'm not ruling that we can't have a discussion. What I'm ruling on is we're approving the agenda. Mr. Wel -- Member Welty wants to add an item to the agenda. We can have a discussion on adding an item to the agenda without discussing the motion. Right now, to add a member -- add an item to the agenda, we need a unanimous vote by the board.
Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm not done. And so, what we're voting on right now is not on a motion, but to add to the agenda. So, let's speak to that. Member Welty?
Mr. Murneke, I guess your point is well taken by me, that it is a decision that apparently requires a unanimous decision by the school board, but I see no reason why it cannot be made in the form of a motion. I have made a motion. This is the question before us. And because it is a motion, I believe that it is entirely in order to discuss the merits of this resolution and the merits of adding it to the agenda.
And again, I'm going to say, what we're going to be voting on right now is to amend the agenda.
I think it's this motion, isn't it?
Yeah, that's to add to the -- to amend the agenda. Why have it? All right.
Well, his motion is that I suggest.
He wants to amend the agenda.
Point of order.
Yes, um.
If there's a discussion between the chair and somebody else, I demand that to be public.
Wait, wait, hold it. Wait one second. Please, please, let me call on you. Mr. Welty?
I have a point of order.
I know you do.
I interrupt the speaker when I have a point of order.
Okay, then, I'll call on you. I'll call you. And I'll explain what's going on now, Mr. Johnston. Member Welty still had his light on, but you have a point of order, so I'll call on you for your point of order.
My point of order is that there cannot be discussion back and forth between members that are not part of this discussion. You can't be whispering on the side.
We are not whispering, sir.
If you have some discussion, have it public with this meeting.
Okay, and again, we're not whispering. Yeah, I'd like to explain that the clerk has some questions on procedure. That's all that was.
Then ask the whole body.
Okay, I have to ask, is this a resolution?
No, it's a -- it's a --
Okay, so I -- because this is confusing, because I think that we have --
It's a motion to amend the agenda. All right. The motion is to amend the agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Member Johnston? Member Johnston?
Yeah, point of order. We have to have discussion on this motion.
To amend the agenda.
Exactly.
We have a discussion.
That's what we've asked for. So, why did you just call for the vote without having a discussion?
Because at that time --
And a point of order, you're doing a legal procedure.
No, 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 no. Please don't do this. At that time --
Please don't me do this?
No, at that time, I looked, there were no lights. Now, Mr. Welty and Mr. Johnston have hit their lights, so we'll continue with the discussion. But, I want it noted. This is very important. And when I said we'll vote on this, there were no lights. There were no lights. All right. In the queue, Member Johnston, you can continue to speak.
Thank you. This was a motion to add an item to the agenda. This is a very important item. This is an item which I had submitted. Actually, I submitted this to the superintendent and the clerk and the chairperson on July 23rd. I was told by the superintendent that this would not be on the agenda because this had already been talked about. If I remind everybody that when the auditor had their report, the meeting was adjourned prematurely before we even got to this part. And consequently, we did not discuss it. If you recall, the auditor said repeatedly that I have no opinion, I have no opinion. We have -- school board members do have opinions. When we talk about $84 million, I think I would hope that we would all have an opinion. And consequently, I'm asking this board to vote to add this to the agenda so we can actually have a discussion on these items, which is so imperative for the well-being of this school and for us to move forward in increasing our teachers, increasing our curriculum, lowering our class sizes, and achieving the -- eliminating the -- lowering the achievement gap.
The meeting that Mr. Johnston's referring to was a meeting we had with the state auditor's office, three members. There were allegations against me about ending the meeting. I took that personally and I asked other board members about this, and then I went and listened to the audio portion, the recorded version. Member Johnston, at the end, I remember Johnston was speaking and I asked, "Do you have any other questions?" And he had others, and he asked, and the auditors responded. That time, there were two other names on the queue. Member Harla. Call the member Harla, and she thanked the auditors in so many words. There was only one other name on the queue. Member Laffler Kemp. She thanked the auditors for their work. I swear, in all honesty, I can't state this any more clearly than I'm seeing right now. There were no lights on. There were no lights on. There were no lights on. There were no names in the queue. I swear, that's true. I thanked the auditors for coming. I said, "Welcome to Duluth. Thank you for coming up. This meeting is adjourned." Member Welty?
I don't really wish to speak to what you've just spoken about, Mr. Chairman, but I will just simply point out that not all of us have that same recollection. What I am interested in talking about is the resolution that I've just made and why I believe we should discuss it now. I am aware that we have a policy that requires that additions to a school board meeting be made on the day of the school board with a unanimous vote. But that puts me in a bit of a pickle. Actually, it puts everybody who's a minority member of the school board in a pickle. I believe the rest of the school board members will recall that I put in a request about a week and a half ago to the chairman, asking him that we add this to the agenda for discussion. The superintendent responded to my request to the chairman, telling me, in effect, that the chairman said, "No, this will not be added to the agenda. This and another item that I wished to bring forward." The dilemma that I and anybody who is a member of the minority face now is there is apparently no way a minority can get anything on the agenda at all, and it's quite simple how this catch-22 works. If we are dependent solely on the decision of one person, the chairman, to place something on the agenda in advance, and then we go to a school board meeting and ask for that same item to be placed on the agenda, we have to have a unanimous vote, which we could presume the chairman will oppose. Now, I know the chairman has bristled at my comment that there is such a thing in parliamentary procedure as a tyranny of the majority, but if there is anything more clear than that, it is that if a minority can never discuss anything because the parliamentary procedures used are rigged in such a way so that no issue can be raised, this is an affront to democracy. Now, I see no other way around it, and I put that rather politely. Now, I have asked that this be placed on the agenda so that we could discuss it. It involves $84 million worth of money, that we have no idea where it went, or if it was spent wisely or honestly. And I would like to have those people who collected the soft money make an account. Presumably, they have accountants and auditors and bookkeepers and kept track of this, probably the modern way, on a computer with spreadsheets, and it would not be terribly difficult for them to put this information out so that we could look at it and ascertain that all of these $84 million of expenditures, 27 percent, nearly a third of the cost of the red plan, far in excess of what we were originally told these soft costs would be, could be laid out before us so that we, as a school board, could determine that this third of the spending on the red plan was, in fact, honestly spent. If we determine that that is the case, and that may very well be the case, we will put to rest the concerns of a lot of people, including me, members of the community who feel that we didn't get a say in the red plan, which most school districts would have taken as a matter of course and routine under state statute. I really do request, because it's fair, that we have this discussion today of this resolution, especially in light of the current predicament we minority members currently face, a catch-22 in which we will never be allowed at a school board meeting to speak about anything of concern to us if we do not have discussion today.
Member Johnston?
Member Johnston?
I think it's important when we add items to an agenda that we're going to assume probably the majority of this board may vote against it. That is democracy. There's another couple axioms in parliamentary procedure that the minority will be heard, but the majority will prevail. But this board has forgotten that the minority has a right to be heard. And it's as simple, it could be as simple as letting us speak, have our five minutes to talk, then we get voted down. It's that simple. It is that simple. And why this board, since I've been on here for five years, will only put agenda items on that they want, that the superintendent Gronseth wants? Superintendent Gronseth always tells me, "Ah, we won't put this on the agenda." This is -- we are a board. This is not the superintendent's board. This is our board. We, as board members, even the minority board members, have a right to speak. We have been denied time and time and time again for no legitimate reason whatsoever.
Member Sliga Ponco?
Thank you, Chair Murneke. I just wanted to make a couple of comments because I feel that, you know, the agenda items that are presented by our staff to run the school district are important for education, for educating our students, and that is our main purpose. And what I'm seeing happen is, for seven years, we have had people that have been angry about our building plan, and the building plan, which has been done for over a year, and we had an auditor look at it. We have had audits yearly. Things are good, except there's still anger about it, and I think we have to remember, as a board, that we are doing this for our students. Soft costs are a big part of what we did, and a lot of the soft costs, I know, I mean, there were the architects, there were so many things, there's a whole list of what they were. And being part of this process for all of these seven years, I saw all of that. We had overruns with -- or over whatever it was, it went over just because certain things, certain schools, we had to redo, or there was more input from the groups that were helping design it. They wanted something different. There were extra costs. We can't expect some of the architects and engineers to work for free, extra, over time. They had to put in extra time, and that's a thing that's lost here. It's money, but look at, I mean, people are thrilled with our schools. We have -- it's been a big difference for our city, too. It's been really good. And our students, they're healthy. I mean, we -- all the things that we've gone over for the last seven years, honestly, some of this has been repeated probably hundreds of times. And I think we should, since school starts in a few weeks, I think that we, as a board, should start focusing on students. If all of that, the costs, their capital, they're not going to go for education. They can't go for curriculum. They were done for the buildings. There's a difference between capital and operating. So, I think we, as a board, it would be advisable that we really just focus on educating our students, and that's what our superintendent and our staff bring to the agenda. Education, items that we need to move the district forward and to help educate kids.
Member Johnston?
I find it very ironic that the member talks about anger. Here, a couple months ago, she was yelling at me. I've been yelled at repeatedly.
I don't think, point of order, I don't think anybody's been yelling. This isn't yelling, this is just, I didn't, don't remember any yelling, but go ahead, please.
Well, I was just quoting that the member said, "anger," but just pointing back that I'm not, I guess she's referring to herself, then. That's, that's, let's have that clarification. All we're talking about is having a discussion. No, we haven't had this discussion. I've had tried to put similar items on the agenda for five years. They've never been put on the agenda. And just some clarifications about being thrilled with the schools. Why have we then lost 1,800 students and I've been on the school board? Why have we lost 250 students? Why do we have one of the largest student-teacher ratios in the state? Why do we have some of the poorest test scores in the state, particularly for minority students? Why? Because part of this has been paid out of the general fund, and that's why it's so important that we find out what happens. That's, again, why we're asking this to be put on the agenda.
Member Welty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Member Sliga Ponco, you've said that you've seen all this. Well, if that's the case, you may be one of the fortunate members of the school board. I know, as a member of the school board now myself, I have never seen these. Before that, I was just a citizen. But Board Member Johnston assures me he has never seen an iteration despite many requests for this information. I know that the two of us have asked for some of the financial information in recent months and been denied a chance, or told by the powers that be, that, "No, this information will not be provided to us unless a majority of the school board chooses to provide it." Now, I do not deny the fact that we have very nice new schools, but all the things and many more that Member Johnston just listed that are difficulties we currently face are very true as well. So, these nice schools have not come without some hitches or glitches. I ran for the school board telling the News Tribune and the community as a whole that I wanted to find out whether or not all of the expenditures made to those people who are distributing the soft costs to others that we do not know about, or at least that Art Johnston and I have never been apprised of, were honest and true, in the hope that if they were not, we could recover them. All of the problems, or a great many of the problems that Mr. -- Member Johnston has mentioned, could be taken care of or assuaged with some of the $84 million, far more than the $34 million that was originally estimated to be part of soft costs. I think we have a responsibility, and I think the public would agree, that our responsibility is to make sure we know that all of this unexpected wealth that went towards soft costs was spent the way it should be spent. Now, I've already said that, as a board member, I am discovering that it is apparently very easy to prevent board members in the minority from having a chance to discuss things. I know that has been a great frustration to Art Johnston, member for the fourth district, the Denfeld district. In fact, for those people who think that I'm in cahoots with Art, I will tell you all now that four and a half years ago when Art got elected, I was so mad at him, I sent him an email telling him I hoped he would get elected to the school board because he would suffer for the next four years. And I got my wish. But currently, I'm a new school board. Art and I have been getting along famously. We both believe that this huge expenditure on behalf of our children in the community must be documented and proven to be sound. I do not think it has been sound for us to take money from our general fund, money for students, and pay off the long-range bonds with it. We've seen repeatedly in newspaper stories that have outraged families all across the school district that these ways of looting the general fund have led to great anguish. I think that all I am presenting in this simple resolution is a request for proof. And if those people who paid soft costs provide us this information, you may very well not only shut up Art Johnston, but Harry Welty. And I would think all of you would be extremely desirous to have us move forward with all of the rest of you, but we cannot do that. I cannot do that in good conscience after having campaigned to get this kind of information, to make sure that this money was spent. And so, I guess I rest my case. I can't, I can't bring anything to the floor without a majority vote. I hope we have it today. Next month, I will not be able to do it. If the chairman can, by his lonesome, deny me a chance to put it on the board, you will have me making this presentation every month until we have a new school board, if that is how we vote today.
Are you done? Member Manning?
Okay. I've been exposed to parliamentary procedure and, like, rules of order, Robert's rules a lot, and I think that we're talking about the motion right now to put this on the agenda.
Exactly.
Personally, I'd prefer if comments are kept, should we put this on the agenda or not? And there's a section called Questions and Other that you can make other comments to the question.
Well said, Member Manning. Thank you. Member Harla?
I'd like to call the question.
Question's been called. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by a member, Sliga Ponco. All in favor of adding to the agenda?
I'll call in the question.
I'm sorry?
I'll call in the question first.
Yeah, we call the question.
And I call for a division of the vote.
After the vote. We vote first, then the division.
You raise your hand or stand up.
Um, I'm the chair, and I'll do it the way I learned. All right, all in favor of adding to the, to amending the agenda, signify.
Calling the question.
No, actually, there's, all right, a point of order is allowed. Go ahead.
We have to have a vote on calling the question.
You're right, absolutely. All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Mr. Welty, do you want a division of the House on that?
I do.
All in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. Opposed? It's six to one with Member Johnston opposed. All right, we now vote on the motion to add to the agenda. All in favor of the motion? I'm sorry?
Can I call for division as a point of order?
On the --
On this vote, we're going to vote.
Wait till after the vote, and then you call for the division. That's how it works. Okay, so, all in favor of adding, of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Nay. Okay, and now, there's a call for division of the House. All in favor of adding to the agenda, raise your hand. Opposed? It's four to three, uh, three to four. It fails with Members Harla, Johnston, and Welty voting. Okay, let's move on, if we could, to the reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Member Welty?
I move to --
Oops, wait, wait. Uh, I guess Member Johnston was first. Member Johnston? Okay. Uh, number Welty?
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the business committee agenda by adding the following motion. I move that in the event of an investigation by the Duluth School Board of any member of the school board which turns up no evidence of activity warranting removal from office, the Duluth School District shall pay.
Member Welty, you're out of order right now, please. When we get to the business committee report, you'll have an opportunity to do that, then. Okay? Thank you.
Order.
Member Johnston?
Motions are in order. The, we are talking, discussing the agenda, and there is, motions to amend that agenda are in order.
The motion to amend the agenda failed, so we've approved the agenda. And now --
Mr. Chairman, point of order, the vote was not to approve the agenda, the vote was to add an item. That failed on a three to four vote. Now, I have made, or I have -- Now I have made, or about two-thirds of the way through making a motion to further change the agenda before we adopt the agenda. This seems to me to be the appropriate time for me to make this motion.
All right, I'm going to, all right, that's fine. Member Welty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we place on the business committee agenda the following motion. I move that in the event of an investigation by the Duluth School Board of any member of the school board which turns up no evidence of activity warranting removal from office, the Duluth School District shall pay all legal costs incurred by the board member in his or her own defense.
Is there a second? Mr. Johnston has seconded. Member Welty? Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to explain myself and the reason for this.
You have the floor.
Just as I explained in the case of the previous motion relating to the, having a, asking for the soft costs, I also sent my request into the chairman a week and a half ago or so, asking that a motion such as this be placed upon the agenda, and this, I was told by the superintendent in response, was not going to be the case, and that, in fact, the chairman had expressed the view that any board member who was involved in wrongdoing would have to pay the usual and customary costs. Now, that's what the email said, as I paraphrase it. I do not know if that is what the chairman intended. But once again, I find myself in a catch twenty-two. As with the previous motion, I have asked that this be placed on the agenda well in advance, was told by one person, apparently, that it would not be added, and now I am faced with the same conundrum, a minority member depending upon a majority vote, not just a majority vote, but a unanimous vote to place something on the agenda that I asked for some time ago, and I know at least two of us favor having been discussed. This is unprecedented. When I served on the school board, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen years ago, we, we accepted routinely that any two board members who asked the chairman to put something on, on the agenda would automatically have it there. That would not be a guarantee that the motions they brought or the issues they brought would, would end up the way they wanted, but at least there would be a discussion. Now, I find myself on a school board in which I cannot bring anything to the floor, and I'm in the same limbo world that poor Member Johnston has been in for the past four years. I think that this is an incredibly sensible proposal and one that we should discuss as we are well on the way to exonerating a board member who has been defamed by some very serious accusations, and I feel that at the very least, if we as a board end up exonerating this, this individual or finding that there is no reason for us or no justifiable reason to remove this person from the board, he should have his legal costs taken care of by the district. I think that this is an incredibly simple and profoundly important thing. We've already had a discussion about the issue of harassment and how school board members are not the same as regular employees. I think that school board members, so that we can encourage other good people to run for the school board, should have an opportunity to know that they're not going to be financially abused when they run afoul of the majority of the school board. So I would like to have this, this motion brought up at the business committee meeting so that we have a chance to rectify what I think is currently a terrible wrong.
What I said in my email, Member Welty, was elected officials, not school board members, elected officials accused of wrongdoing do not have their legal fees paid for by the governmental unit. Member Johnston.
That was the chair's opinion. Mr. Welty and I brought this up here because we disagree with that opinion, as did our insurance person that came and talked about this before. He said that very likely, and whether or not this board agrees to go ahead and do this, I will certainly be submitting my legal bills, which are getting quite substantial, thanks to the chairperson and the superintendent accusing me of assault. Those are pretty serious charges. I would like to add, I'm not going to make amendment on this, but I would like to add just a comment that when I am exonerated, which obviously will be, that those two members have to pay all the school district bills. Member Murnekey and Superintendent Gronthseff would pay the bills that we incur, which are going to be quite substantial, not only mine, but the school district's. That was a very vindictive thing that they did, and I would like to have the board to do this.
Again, we're speaking to the motion. We're speaking to the motion right now.
Sure, let's stay.
Okay.
Okay, why doesn't this board want to allow the minority to add members? As I've said before, basic parliamentary procedure is, or parliamentary axiom is that the minority has a right to speak, the will of the majority will prevail. We all know that, except, except apparently this board. So why would the board not want to allow this? I would say, you know, if there was an outside observer looking at this board and all these simple things, all they'd have to do is let us have this on and vote it down. It's that simple. We'd have a lot less discussion, the meetings would go a lot faster. But no, it appears, an outside observer would say maybe this board is just being mean-spirited. Or maybe would mean that maybe this board is hiding something. That's what most outside observers would look at. So from that point of view, to avoid those questions, I think we, again, on this one, I would ask this board to vote in affirmative to add this on the agenda.
We'll now vote on the motion. All in favor of Mr. Welty's motion to add to the agenda, signified by saying aye. Opposed, nay, nay. All in favor of adding to the agenda, raise your hand, please. All opposed? It's five to two with Member Johnston and Member Welty voting in favor. We now go to the reading of the mo. Oh, let's approve of the agenda. All in favor of approving the agenda, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It was five to two with Members Johnston, Member Welty voting against. Approving the minutes, regular school board meeting, July fifteenth. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Member Westholm, second. Second by a member Laffer Kemp. Seeing the lights, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to nothing. Special school board meeting, July twenty-second, is there a motion to approve? Moved by Member Harla, second. Second by a member Westholm. Member Johnston.
Got some discussion on it, just a clarification here, the meeting was improperly adjourned. Just like to have that clear on the record.
That's your opinion. All in favor of the meeting, the minutes of the meeting, signified by saying aye. Opposed? It was passed, six to one. Special school board meeting on July twenty-ninth, is there a motion to pass? So moved by a member Harla, seconded. Seconded by a member Westholm. Seeing the lights, all, oop, Member Harla.
I just want to note the addition that was put in our folders of the corrected copy.
Right. We do have an addendum to that, if that's all right, it was passed out to us, basically describing the lots. Any discussion on that? All in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes, seven to zero. And we now go on to the part that I have always enjoyed, schooling community recognition. Assistant Superintendent Crawford, if you would be so kind, and the board members, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening, members of the board. This month, I'm pleased to present Tracy Klana, Kelly LaCorre, Rebecca Havick, and Sarah Hendrickson for recognition, representing True North AmeriCor. The mission of True North AmeriCor is to support on-time graduation, ensuring that youth are prepared for academic, civic, and economic success, a program of the Duluth Area Family YMCA. They partner with nonprofits, schools, and community agencies to serve Duluth and Proctor. The AmeriCor grant process is highly competitive due to the strong and growing demand by organizations seeking these resources. We're very fortunate that True North AmeriCor received grant funding to provide volunteers in our schools. This year, True North AmeriCor members will help support reading and math interventions during the school day and academic support and engagement activities after school in collaboration with community-based organization. We're very pleased to have True North AmeriCor working in our schools, helping to support community goals associated with achievement and graduation. Many thanks to True North AmeriCor for all they do to support education.
We have so many good people who do so much to help our kids, and we really can't express ourselves, our thanks anymore. It's just phenomenal what they do. We now go to the audience portion, and again, we'd love to welcome Cassandra Donkey from all the way up from Houston, Texas, and I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Thank you.
I just want to thank the board and the community for giving me a few minutes to speak. Both my parents came from Proctor, so a part of my heart has always been here, and I've spent more summers and falls and winters up here than I can count. I'm glad to be up here now because Houston's up in the upper nineties, Austin's over a hundred, it's good to be here. I just want to thank you all for your service and those from the community for being here, and those who are on staff for the tremendous work that you do. Civility is an essential ingredient to effective government, my friends. It's a piece we cannot do without. It's not always easy, but it's a strategy that serves us well not only in the moment, but in the foundation that we lay for those who will come behind us in years to come. I encourage you to know that your service is appreciated, it's important, it's not easy, hang in there, and please consider the institute as a resource. People around the country are fighting the same battles, trying to do the same good things. You don't want to be a community that falls apart because you can't talk to one another anymore. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming up. Our next speaker is Lauren Martel. Welcome, Mr. Martel.
Thank you, good evening. The chair of this board has accused a colleague of assault. He's accused me of lying. What's the proof of his claim against me? He says he checked an audio recording. How do you prove whether or not a light is on from an audio recording? He said he asked some board members. Did he ask the ones likely to tell him something he didn't want to hear? I don't think so. He asked the ones he knew were going to nod and agree with him. Is it possible his computer screen was blank? Definitely possible, because the microphone system doesn't work. Did we buy it from Johnson Controls? How much did we pay for this thing? Month after month, the dysfunctionality of the microphone system mirrors the dysfunctionality of this board. The chair has proved exceptionally unskilled at operating it. He constantly misses lights, especially Art Johnston's. Of course, I could throw around a charge of lying myself. I could suggest the chair, unable to dispute any point I made about the auditor's presentation, in wanting to disable one of his hated naysayers, simply reverted to character assassination with another phony charge. I saw Mr. Johnston's light on when the chair adjourned the special meeting in July. A good, solid citizen sitting beside me saw it on also. Board Member Welty remembers seeing the light on. When I asked Board Member Johnston, he said, quote, "My light was on." I had a statement from a board member that his light was on, and the evidence the chair cited in his attack article did not conclusively refute my reporting. Members of this board have asked for special meetings to be broadcast over public access. Doing that would also provide a video recording. Only a video recording could produce indisputable evidence about whether or not a light was on. If such a recording were to surface, I have a feeling I'm the one who would be due an apology. Would I be likely to get it? I won't make a negative assessment of the chair's character like he did me, because I don't know him personally. I don't know if he would apologize or not. But I do know the chair of this board has been displaying a penchant for hurling wild, ugly accusations out into the community based on very skimpy evidence, and that's a very bad habit.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to report of the superintendent. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Murnekey. Well, believe it or not, things are going pretty smoothly here in the school district, and just two weeks from today will be the first day of school, and this is a bit of a change from our usual start date. In years past, we'd started on the Thursday after Labor Day, so just a reminder that we are starting on Tuesday after Labor Day, that's September second. And as always, this is a very exciting time of year, and, you know, the kids are filled with hope, and the teachers are coming back to their classrooms and getting the bulletin boards up and getting things ready, and just like a brand-new notebook, they look at the year as a brand-new blank slate and a chance for a fresh beginning, and that's always exciting at the beginning of the year. Our principals and our teachers and our students have quite a few changes to look forward to this year. We have a newly-aligned curriculum, we have new materials, and new opportunities for growth. And the training and the planning that staff has done over the course of the summer will help us to focus on the individual needs of every student, to help them master the standards of each content area at each grade level. And with the district-wide continuous improvement plan goals being worked on every day throughout the district, we are making progress towards our goals, and we're seeing growth in many areas, and there is still a lot of work to be done before we can meet our goals. But this year's focus on improving instruction and meeting the needs of every student in every classroom, classroom through the use of PLCs or professional learning communities will help us to make more progress on our goals, to raise student achievement, to reduce the achievement gap, the opportunity gap, and increase graduation rates. There's also a few changes that parents should keep in mind this year. One of those changes are the new immunization requirements, especially for kindergarten and grade seven. So families should make sure that their students are up to date on their immunizations before school starts. Families can feel free to contact the schools, the school nurses specifically, if they need some help getting access to health care or immunizations for their children. Another change involves winter weather, what, which we're all looking forward to, right? Although the last few days maybe have felt like we were a little bit closer to Although the last few days maybe have felt like we were a little bit closer to those winter weather days than we'd like to be. We have added a two-hour late start as a possible way to address inclement weather. We all know that last year we had eight snow days, and perhaps two or three of them could have been saved with a two-hour late start. So better to start two hours late than to miss a whole day. And we'll be sharing more information with families on that as we get closer to that winter weather. We have sent some information out with your packets, so if you haven't taken a look at those yet, please do. So over the next two weeks, we will continue to prepare for the coming school year. Next week, we'll be holding orientation for our new teachers, which we do every year. Although I cannot remember a time when we were welcoming 55 new teachers to Duluth, which is very exciting. We are thrilled to be welcoming that many teachers to Duluth. It's going to be a great year, and we look forward to welcoming students back to school. Until then, enjoy the last days of summer, and we'll see you very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Grandseth. Members of the Legapunkle.
Thanks, Chair. I just want to mention, Superintendent, I appreciate your report. I have heard about the early start on Tuesday from a few parents and students, and it's a whole mind shift because we have started on Thursday for so many years. I think one of the years, or a few years back, we did start on Wednesdays, but the whole Tuesday thing is anew. But I do appreciate the two-hour late start because we heard loud and clear last year with all of those snow days, cold days, whatever they were, that. Because I know it's crazy to try to make up things for after-school activities too and the community. So I just really appreciate that we're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the Legapunkle. Member Lafferty Kemp.
Yeah, I just wanted to also, as a parent of a seventh grader, this year say that my seventh grader is filled with much hope for the year as well. And as a parent, I was very pleased to get the packet of information a week or so ago and am really thrilled and have heard good feedback on the family and student handbook that families have received and the upgrades we did with that. And I just, again, as one of the only school board members with a child in school and out in, on the soccer field and hearing from parents, I agree with you. There's a lot of excitement for this coming year and even with the day starting on Tuesday. So, thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to our education committee report. Member Harla.
Thank you, Chair. We had a, it was another Tuesday where there was an election, so we had to be out by 6:00 PM. We had a really great, great education committee meeting last week. We had some wonderful presentations that I look forward to talking through, but I would just echo what other members just said of the excitement over the next year. And one of the most exciting things for the beginning of the year I'm seeing is for, was a presentation we had from Jamie Zach from the Duluth Community Garden Program, who classrooms and spent a lot of, in many of our schools, in the fall, in the spring, spent a lot of time planting for a fall harvest. And I'm so excited for the students that got to plant last year and get it to come in this year to see what they get to harvest, some of the things that they planted, and they'll get to use it in their classrooms and throughout the lunchtime. So we did have a presentation from Jamie Zach from the garden program. She's spent the last two years really supporting farm-to-school initiatives and school gardens within our district and across northeast Minnesota. I'm really building a, really building capacity for how we can integrate classrooms and an outdoor classroom utilizing the garden. It brings in science, it brings in math, and it gives an opportunity for students to learn in such a broad level. We also know that it's a way to teach kids about eating healthy. And I know that the grant funding comes from a grant for obesity and tobacco prevention. So just glad to know that she has been so involved. And some grants were given to five schools in our district, but she did serve folks throughout the whole district. I do know that Myers-Wilkins Elementary School, Congdon Park Elementary School, Ordine East, and Lincoln Park Middle School and East High School received grants. So it's, and most of our schools actually do have school gardens and teachers that are on their own time going in and really weeding these gardens. And throughout the summer, I know our after-school programs are supporting them too. Glad, so, so really proud of that program that's happening in our district and want, and look forward to seeing it continue. Unfortunately, her grant funds are expiring, so she won't be able to support us at this time after September, but I know that there are people looking to replace her position from throughout the region. So just a very big thank you to the Duluth Community Garden Program and to regional partners that support her being here. And to all the teachers and students that get to go. I do know that my mom's class planted potatoes, and they cannot wait. She's excited to harvest them. So we didn't always have a green thumb in our house growing up, so I'm proud of that, that piece. The next piece that we had was Pam Reese talking about Head Start outcomes. She gave us a brief presentation, and we were funded. As of the 1st of August, we got back our $99,000 from the sequester. We also received a cost-of-living allowance for our, for the staff here, so we had a big win. And this, the reason we got the funding, it's for five years, we got this because we have a track record of success throughout the district. And we've seen that in many of our programs. We continue to have high and effective programs, and I'm really proud that we received that grant funding. So thank you to Pam Reese and her staff that spent a lot of time working on that. I also am glad to know that they're working to get the classroom back at Piedmont. That was a big, because of the sequester and the loss of funds, they had to close down that program in the past. That will be open this year. I was glad to see that come across our email with all of those new hire emails coming through from the HR department. So glad to know that those are open. So that's our Head Start program from Pam Reese. The third was a wonderful presentation from Denfeld and East Robotics Team. We cleared out the back of the, or they cleared out the back of the room and showed us their robots. And this is a, it's an opportunity and this, what moved me most was the students sharing from their hearts how this was such a well-rounded experience. And to be honest, some of the students were talking about words within the robot. I had no idea what they were talking about. They said it with passion. They've built this. And I just think if I had something, it was theater for me in high school. It was, it was being involved in theater and choir that really helped me and helped me find my spark. To see these students speak with passion, and one of the students got a little bit choked up as they were speaking, and I was so proud. And I was really glad to see them talk about how it brings them together. It's, there's competition in the sport, but it's also a team-building sport. And they talked about how they've been doing some gatherings together, and they, they actually, part of their challenge this year had to work as a team in order to win. It wasn't just individual teams together. And they talked about working across the district, connecting, connecting the two high schools, and actually connecting as a, as the kind of the greater Duluth region of folks that are doing robotics. I do know that they hosted a competition this last weekend at East High School. I'm, I know that they kind of took over the high school, and I'm just, I'm glad to know that we have programs like this and that we continue. I know that a lot of our athletics began this fall. We'll see a lot of, a lot of ways that students are able to enter in and find a way that they can fit in and glad that we, we work to open those doors for our students in the district. The fourth item for the school improvement efforts at Laura MacArthur, the item was tabled due to a personal circumstance for the presenter. We're assured he'll be here in the future, so that, those are informational items. I'll move next to the item, to the presentation items requiring approval. There were none. And then we did talk about the new bullying policy. Again, a number of community members came together, led, and a big thank you to Mr. Lake for his help with bringing together this group of people that are, that have begun to do a framework of a policy that will start. We need to make sure that we have a main bullying policy for the beginning of this school year. And so tonight is the second reading of, and we will be voting to approve this new policy tonight. And again, it's a framework for the bullying policy that will be the base for our whole community to jump off of, to have, have a discussion about how we address bullying, how we continue to make our schools safe, and how we can make them safer. So thank you very much to Mr. Lake and to the community members that joined that day. I was very, I'm just impressed that, and we heard from, from the, from the presenter and that joined, Mr. Lake, just that she felt that the group was a diverse group, that they felt that there was a lot of good representation from the community and from the schools. So thank you for that, and we look forward to passing a framework tonight that we can then continue a broader discussion district-wide. And then the next is a Resolution E-814-3202, Acceptance of Grants Awards to Duluth Public Schools. Do you want me to read through that right now, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is, again, a new change in our state procedures. So if you'd read that resolution, move it, and then we can vote on it.
Yep, so whereas Minnesota State, Minnesota Statute 46465.03 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grants from set organizations in accordance with the terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And this one is for the Northland Foundation for Positive Intervention Training for Education Staff Dealing with Disruptive Behaviors. And so I move Resolution Number E-814-3202.
This is your second. Second by member Welty. Any discussion? Member Welty? Whoops. Nope. Okay.
And Chair, I move, oh.
You have to put your light on. Okay, there we go. You should be on.
I, Chair, I move, we, we need to vote on.
We need to vote on that.
Before we vote, you know, for discussion purposes, I would like to mention Pam Reese and what a wonderful job she does with Head Start. She presented us with a great graphic that showed how much, how many gains they're making in different levels for the Head Start. I mean, and it was, it was this outstanding, astounding and outstanding what Pam and her crew does do with, with the Head Start program. And also, being an old activities director, I always liked to see students involved in so many things and to see the robotics teams and how they talked about cooperating with each other. All of us on the board felt that was, that was probably the highlight about how the Denfeld and East students work with each other, and that was just a, it was a wonderful time. Okay, member, we're going to vote on the, oh, we're voting on the grant. I'm sorry. Okay, you want to vote on the, talk about the grant then? Harry or?
I'd like to point out that, that we did have a motion, and you were stealing a little of the thunder. I was hoping to unload on item three at the point when we discuss this, but I'll pass on that, hoping that I can say something about the robotics teams as well.
I jumped the gun. All right, we're going to vote on acceptance of the grant. All in favor, signify by saying aye. I oppose. That passes seven-nothing.
And Chair, I move the committee report.
And the committee report has been moved, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by member Westall. Mr. Welty.
Yes, I'd like to withhold item three, and when we've seen, if anybody else has something to say, I'll be happy to talk about item three.
Go ahead.
Nobody else? I, when the, when the students from East and Denfeld very patiently waited for us to get finished with a rather long set of presentations before it was their turn to show their stuff, they, they gave us a wonderful demonstration of the two robots they have had this year, one from each team. And I will just mention that when, when one team had their robot shove the other robot around, I, I pointed out that we were considering a bullying policy. And they very quickly pointed out that they did not do this in competition, and in fact, they would be fined many points for, for acting in this way. And I came home and I told my, my wife about this and told her about how wonderful it was to see these, these two teams working so closely together. And my wife, who is on a, a board which granted some, some monies, I believe, to the Denfeld Robotics Team, said, "Well, you haven't read some of the very heartwarming appeals for, for support from, I think especially the Denfeld students." And she told me the backstory. Of course, East has for some time had a robotics team, and a lot of the Denfeld students wanted to be a part of it, and, and kind of asked the East people if they couldn't maybe have a part. And the East students and team very, very graciously invited them on board. And, and the demonstration from the two teams was a good illustration of how two parts of town that sometimes seem to have such different, different attributes can have students that work so closely together. And it was quite apparent from, from this demonstration that, that the robotics team is setting a standard that hopefully the rest of our school district can follow.
Member Harla, do you have something to say? All in favor, accepting the, oh, I'm sorry, member Westall.
Yeah, this would be a very brief comment. I want to follow up on what member Welty was talking about. The program is extending not only to high schools, and I know I questioned some people, is there anything for middle school or elementary school kids? And there is a summer program, and I have an eight-year-old grandson who participated in that. And, and when you think about what these kids are getting, and of course, for younger kids, even the older kids, it's not only learning and higher-level thinking skills, but it's fun, and it's good fun. And I'm glad to see that this is expanding throughout the schools and throughout the grade levels. And it, you know, and we do, and I know the public knows this, but maybe not to the extent. You know, I was, I was a football coach and a track coach, and I, you know, I coached a lot of athletic teams, but also I know we were looking for non-athletic programs, whether they were competitive or not, whether it's mock trial or speech or other things because, because not everybody's an athlete, and robotics is one of those kinds of programs. So again, it's a good example of, of one of the very positive things that are, that our kids are doing and our staff are supporting and helping with too. So that's my commentary.
Thank you, member Westall. All in favor, accepting the education report, signify by saying aye. I oppose. That passes seven-nothing. Member Welty, the HR report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The action items began the meeting, as always, and we're getting a change of personnel to, to answer our questions regarding these, but I will just simply list what I believe will probably be amendments to it. We've had a lot of staffing changes going on here as we approach the new school year. As, what I, what I see currently is that at the moment, we have 14 total certified appointments, one certified extracurricular appointment, three certified extensions, six certified leaves, five certified permanent increases, one certified resignation, one certified summer school, three certified temporary decreases, nine total non-certified appointments, six non-certified extensions, two non-certified leaves, eight non-certified permanent decreases, 52 total non-certified permanent increases, three non-certified promotions, four non-certified recalls, one non-certified resignation, two non-certified retirements, and 33 non-certified summer school places, and one non-certified temporary increase. That part of the meeting went pretty quickly, and those are the changes in personnel up to this point in time. In addition to that, we had a discussion, which got to be rather long, but I think was a very productive one, about a policy that is in its second reading for board approval. That one is number 4015, prohibiting harassment and violence. It used to say "and bullying," but bullying has gotten its own separate policy number nowadays. We had a rather extensive discussion and reached a general consensus among board members. That has to do with what you will find on page 11. And you can see that there is a, under item four, individuals covered by this harassment policy. There is an addition, as per the discussion that we had, about the unique attributes of school board members. Yes, we are paid for our services, school board members, but no, we do not consider ourselves, as we know from earlier discussions this summer, as regular personnel of the school district. So when it was suggested that school board members be added to this list of individuals covered by this policy, rather than taking for granted that... covered by this policy, rather than taking for granted that we were regular personnel, I see that the, the administration has taken our request into consideration and has changed this regulatory portion of the, the actual policy, and I am grateful for that change. And that's, that's, that's it for HR. At this time, I would move adoption of the Human Relations.
Human Resources.
Report for this month.
Moved by member Welty, seconded by member Harla. Any discussion? Member Welty, do you want to? See, there you go. All right, all in favor of accepting the Human Resources reports, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We now go to the Business Committee report. Member Laffler Kemp.
Thank you. We had a very full meeting, hour and a half meeting last week, with a lot of good discussion and a lot of good reporting as well, but I motion, I move to approve the Business Committee meeting. The first item on here is the financial report, and just note that it'll be presented at a future date because of wrapping up at the end of the year. Budget revisions, that was on page three. Wire transfers, page five. Investment transactions, page six. And then move down to the policies and regulations. And Chair Murdock, would you like me to take these one at a time, or?
Yes, I think what we need to do is, the policies are fine, we can just read through those, yes. It's a resolutions we'll vote on, so.
Okay, okay, so it's recommended that the Duluth School Board, Policy Thirty-Forty, it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the proposed changes to Policy Thirty-Forty, gifts, grants, and bequests for the second reading. Okay, and then contract change orders and leases. The first one is with Keyzone and YMCA, which we heard a little bit about earlier. It's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the agreement with the YMCA for the 2014-15 school year. And then the second is the YMCA Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center programs, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve the agreement with the YMCA for the 2014-15 school year. And there were no change orders or leases. And then the first resolution, Resolution B eight fourteen thirty-two oh-one, which is on page twenty-six.
Do you wanna move that?
And I'd like to move that resolution, and.
It's moved by member Laffler Kemp. Is there a second? Second by member Harla. Member Laffler Kemp, would you like to read it, please?
Yes, so again, Resolution B eight fourteen thirty-two oh-one on page twenty-six, approving the partial settlement agreement for confession of judgment related to the Timber Systems Trust repairs at Lincoln Park Middle School. Whereas on June fifteenth, 2010, the school board approved bid eleven eighty-four, Work Scope Number Nine, authorizing administration to enter into an agreement between Independent School District Seven Oh Nine and Timber Systems LLC for structure glue laminated construction at Western Middle School, now known as Lincoln Park's Middle School. And whereas after construction was completed and following a heavy snow load during the 2013-2014 winter season, the trusses provided by Timber Systems were determined to be underdesigned and emergency snow removal efforts and trust bracket reinforcements were required, and whereas Timber Systems had stipulated and agreed in a confession of judgment to reimburse the district for the cost incurred related to the emergency snow removal and defective trust repairs, and will pay the cost of permanent repairs. And whereas ISD Seven Oh Nine has agreed that if Timber Systems pays the sum of forty thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars by January fifteenth, 2016, the district will not pursue collection proceedings against Timber Systems for said sum. Now for there be, therefore be it resolved by the school board of Independent School District Seven Oh Nine, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the partial settlement agreement for confession of judgment between Independent School District Seven Oh Nine and Timber Systems is approved.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes seven, nothing. Next resolution?
Okay, again, this is on page thirty-two. It's Resolution B eight fourteen thirty-two oh-three, Acceptance of Donations to Duluth Public Schools, and I move to approve this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Seligapunko. Would you read the resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution Acceptance of Donations to Duluth Public Schools, whereas Minnesota Statute four-six-five point oh-three requires a school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below described donations from said organizations in accordance with the terms set forth within. Be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And we will wanna thank Ed Sloan for a thousand copies of the book, The Constitution of the United States and Amendments, The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? It's seven to nothing. Thank you. Number six?
And number six is informational items, and on page thirty-three is expenditure contracts. And just note, on page thirty-three, there were a number of trainings, including training for paraprofessionals, which is coming up next week, dealing with mental illness, which I was really glad to see. And then there were non-revenue contracts or other contracts. D, Facilities Management and Capital Project Status Report, that's on page fifty-two. And just, again, like to note the, the work that our operations crew has been doing through the summer. And E, Contracts Signed in Relationship to the Long Range Facility Plans, on page fifty-seven. And on page fifty-eight, Contract Change Orders, No Costs Signed in Relationship to the Long Range Facility Plan. And lastly, future items will be, is a financial audit, and again, back in February of 2013, the school board voted for a five-year audit process, so the audit is in process, so just for the public's information. Like to move this?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Westholm. Discussion? All in favor, signify. I'm sorry, member Harla?
I just wanted to pull the Duluth Adult Basic Education and SOAR Career Solutions, just had a comment on that.
I'm sorry, which one?
Contracts.
Under contract.
Expenditure contracts, six A.
Six A, there we go, thank you. Member Johnston?
Do a separate vote on three A one.
Three A one. Member Laffler Kemp?
Oh.
Okay. All right, let's start with, oh, member Johnston. Let me, let me redo that. I thought that was it, I'm sorry. Okay, member Johnston, wanna hit your light? There you go. Thank you.
Do a separate vote on item four?
On item four?
I'd have a discussion on six D, six E, and seven A.
Anything else? Okay, member Harla?
I just wanted to pull out that we did, there, there was a contract signed with SOAR Career Community Solutions, and that's with, for adult basic education, and that's supporting career readiness for older adults in the community. Just wanna make a reminder that we do have early childhood all the way through continuing education for older adults, and so, I was just really glad to know that SOAR is a great community partner, and I'm glad to know that we're working with them to be, helping members of the community that may need some additional support in finding careers, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Member Johnston, three A. Would you like to speak to that? Nope, oh, separate vote then. We're voting on Policy Thirty-Forty, Gifts, Grants, and Bequests. Seeing no lights, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That goes seven, zero. Member Johnston, four A one, any discussion? None? Anybody else? Seeing none? Member Harla?
I just, I know that we gave an award tonight to the, to True North AmeriCorps, but that's also connected, their, their fiscal host is the Duluth YMCA, and they're involved in many of our schools, supporting our students, and one of the key pieces of closing the achievement gap that we have within our continuous improvement plan is support beyond the school day, and so I'm glad to know that we have community partners that are continually wanting to be involved with our students and with our schools, outside of the contracted workday with our teachers, that they continue to have positive adult behavior, and so, positive adults and, and support for them.
Member Johnston?
Yeah, thanks, member Harla, on that, so I'll just echo what she said, these are good programs, and any of us adults out here on TV land, as well as any school or members can come in and help, and I do that regularly, that's a fun program.
Thank you. All in favor of, well, that's not a resolution, so, did you want a separate vote on that, or just, okay, separate vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes seven, zero. Discussion Items, number six D. Member Johnston?
Sure, I'm not sure if this is six D or six C and a half, but anyway, it's on page,
Fifty-two.
Fifty-five. And it has, it's a question revolving, this is a ledger, and the thing I didn't understand was on page fifty-five, there's three items on CLPs two thousand twelve A, and just some explanation of why an item CLP, which is certificates of participation, which is what we did to, one of eight items used to fund the long-range facility plan, just wondering why that has a special item.
Do you want, member, do you want Mr. Lighter to respond, or who?
Anybody could.
Who's gonna hit your light there?
Jody, do you have your light?
The funding sources that we received all relate to the type of bond issues when they were issued, and we tracked all the expenditures by the bond issues. So on this particular one, there was a, a small charge to that particular bond issue for some services or, or supplies that were received in the last, I would probably say sixty days. But it's just, we have miscellaneous expenditures still coming in on the long-range facility plan.
Okay, how is that different from the above items, which is just building acquisition and construction? I assume that the two thousand twelve A is money coming in that, that of course we spent, which I'm not here to talk about, but I'm just wondering, that seems to be another side of the, seems like it should be another side of the ledger, and shouldn't this be in the building acquisition and construction? It's kind of, it's not, it's a minor issue, but still, it's, it was kind of perplexing.
At a later date, there will be a meeting with the school board to talk about the funds that are remaining in the long-range facility plan, and, and what would some of the options be that the board may wanna consider. And the, as you look at this list, on this particular page, we had one item related to the Lincoln Park Middle School, one item to Piedmont, one item to Denfeld, and one item to East, so they're all still.
Okay, looking forward to having that discussion in the future.
Okay, item six E. Member Johnston?
Yeah, six C is on page fifty-seven. It's a little bit, again, this involves the issue that we had on Lincoln Park Middle School, I believe. That's a fairly substantial amount of money, it looks like about ten thousand, almost eleven thousand dollars, and just curious where that money came from. Did that, was that paid for by the contractor, or is that out of other funds? Anyway, just, where'd that money come from?
Mr. Lighter?
Member Johnston, members of the board, I can confirm at this time that the Twinports testing amount and the American Engineering testing amount, we have been reimbursed by Timber Systems for those charges. The Qualtum is a third-party expert consultant in trusts, wood trust manufacturer, that we, working with LHB, agreed that we would benefit by having that expert provide an opinion to provide peer review of the Timber Systems design of the repair, and therefore felt it was in the district's best interest to have that independent consultant. Have not at this time determined whether we're going to seek to recover that from Timber Systems. It was our, our choice to do that, and that cost would be paid from the long-range plan funds for Lincoln Park Middle School. That's where they were assessed.
Okay, as I know we got about, I think it's in here, we got a forty-three thousand dollar reimbursement, eventually that's what the resolution passed, so, so part of that, it's still gonna come out probably at this point, and best estimate is that, that will come out, and I think what you said, the long-range facility plan money, it won't be covered by Timber Systems at eight thousand dollars? I admit I misunderstand, sorry.
Yeah, at, at this time, we, we don't have agreement with them regarding that, but we felt that even without that agreement, we should have that expertise on our side to make sure that once we did complete the repairs, that we had a peer review confirm that that design was adequate, given that the original design by Timber Systems was determined to be not adequate.
Yeah, it sounds like a good thing, I'm not, I wasn't complaining about, about the process it did, I was just more wondering about the money part, about, you know, who's gonna pay for it. It seems like Timber Systems should, or the architects, or the contractors, but it sounds like it'll probably come out of the, the construction money.
I think that that's most likely the, the outcome, that we will pay for that, and I think it was a good decision on our part to make sure that it was done right this time.
Well, sure, again, I'm not complaining about that at all, the decision is good, we gotta do that. Just, again, it's kind of, it seems like they should pay for it, not us, since it was, it sounds like a design problem there, so, so if you go back, ask for some more money back.
Okay, seven A.
Sure, I just wanted to say again, this is the future item on the, on the audit, and I just, actually, from the administration, I had some fairly serious concerns last year, and I just wanna reiterate that again. As a minimum, the CPA should at least put her name on the document. I hope that, that will happen this time. It's a fairly small thing to ask, it seems like a mandatory thing for CPA to put her John Henry on the document, and at that point, I'll leave it at that, and any other items, I'm certainly be glad to talk to the administration about.
Thank you. We now move to approval of the business report. All in favor, signify. I'm sorry, member Johnston, the light was not on when I started the sentence. Member Johnston?
Sure, I'm gonna be voting against this for a while, I was voting for these, and I'm gonna be voting against the rest of this report. Once, wanted to say why was, one, I think it's important that we have an accounting of, for example, these excessive soft costs, eighty-four million dollars, and I was glad to hear that we're gonna have a discussion sometime on, it looks like maybe excess money from the long-range facility plan, and certainly, I asked for that also, I hear a couple weeks ago, and I was turned down, saying what happened in the future, but until- But until that happens, and we get a good discussion, I will be voting against this financial report, the rest of this financial report.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That's six to one. Thank you. There are no special resolutions, any questions? Member, I'm sorry, Superintendent Grandseth?
Not a question, but just a comment and reminder to keep your eye on the skies tomorrow morning, as your superintendent and your high school principals will be boarding F-18s and flying with the Blue Angels.
Be sure to have an umbrella handy for the vomit that will be henceforth coming. Member Waltie?
Yes, I'll pass out a recommended, recommended change to policy that we have, ninety seventy-five, having to do with the agenda of regular meetings, which also, by coincidence, deals with another issue that, Member Johnston, I promised we would bring back to you, and that is communications from the board and how they are publicized. We have not been placing emails on, on our school board booklets for the month, which is a departure from past practice, at least with communications. The part that I am particularly concerned about is the, the first portion, you can read this on your own, I'm going to put in a request that we consider this at our next meeting. I don't know that I have a great deal of faith that we will consider this based upon the vote today, and I still find myself in the catch twenty-two, which I suspect might violate state law, that minority members are not allowed to add any items to a discussion in an elected body. Just, it's just, it's just wrong, period, but I, I suspect a good lawyer could, could make a case that we are violating state statutes by denying those of us in the minority from having a chance to discuss things. So, I will let you take a look at that, you can see that basically, it provides a way for minority members to add things to an agenda, and I hope that we are able to consider both portions of this at a future meeting.
Member Westholm?
I used to be a principal, can't I be a Blue Angel, too?
Not my decision.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Actually, I think Member Harla's.
No, it's you, and then-
Oh, okay.
It is you.
Okay. I just wanted to echo that, as we start the school year again, that I encourage community members to think about being involved in our schools and contacting schools to see about volunteer opportunities, reading opportunities. At most sites, there is a volunteer process in place as well, but we welcome volunteers at our school, and I, I know I was fortunate for three years to be the volunteer coordinator at Lester Park, and it was really wonderful to have retired folks and grandparents and that involved. So, just at the start of the school year, do a plug for that. And then also, just want to congratulate our two seniors who are serving on our board with us for starting out their senior year, Colby at Denfeldt and Paul at East. And we look forward to hearing great things about your year. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Harla?
I just wanted to say good luck to our students and our staff this fall, and I know our administration didn't have much time off this summer, and we know we're just really thankful for all the work that you do to support all the students in our district, and want to put a plug in there, that last year, Denfeldt did a day in the life of Denfeldt, and if any other schools want to do that, it was really helpful, just for a broad number of people to be able to see that. And so, I, I know I had spoken with Dr. Carey about how he's going out from school to school to spend time in them, and really moved that we can spend time in these schools. So, thank you, and good luck in the first couple of weeks of school.
Thank you. Student Representative Manning?
Hi. Some people have talked about a lot of new things going on, and I'd like to add to that. Couple exciting new things happening at East this year for my last year and a couple people's first. There's a debate team happening for the first time in thirty-some years going on in the Duluth area. We're having coaches who've gone to national tournaments before, helping out coach, and should be exciting for all the speechies and theater kids who hear about that now. And the newspaper at East might be getting together a website to put all their articles online, get some digital editions out there, see some pretty cool modernizations with that. Also, with those theater kids, there's a new theater director at East as well, and there'll be a lot of new productions, so I invite you all to come and see some of those.
We always enjoy hearing all the good news, and appreciate that. Mr. Westholm and I are Denfeldt grads, and not a lot of people know that Denfeldt was national debate champion at one time, and, and when I was at East, we had an individual who was state debate champion. So, both, both schools have a rich history, and, and we're very glad for your, your report on that. Thank you. Member Johnston?
Sure like to thank Student Manning for that report, and in particular, like to maybe even make a request through the superintendent, is, I love student newspapers, I love the creativity that goes into those, and I often miss them. And if maybe, if, if you've got a hard copy, maybe bring it up and shove it in our mailbox here in the next school board meeting, when the next school board meeting comes up, we'll get those, don't have to have them promptly, but I love student papers, and I'd be glad to get yours. I get Denfeldt once in a while, but I don't get East very much, so please try to get that to me, I would much appreciate it. And keep up the good work on those papers.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.